Welcome to the June 16, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I'm Bonnie Sontag. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. I will start with roll call as we always do with an online meeting. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delisle.
Here.
Anne Gardner. Anne, you're muted. I'll come back to her.
I'm sorry, Bonnie. I'm here.
Okay, good. Liam McGovern will not be with us tonight. Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde. Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. Linda Guthrie, our note taker, is with us, and it looks like Andy Port is the representative from the Planning Office with us tonight. The agenda is as follows. We have requests for minor modifications at One Boston Way and Three Boston Way. Then we have correspondence with a letter from residents of the Evergreen Development regarding a proposed fence. Then we have approval of minutes for the 5-19 meeting. We only received the minutes for the June 2 meeting tonight, so we will postpone the review and approval of those until our next meeting. The majority of our meeting will be taken up with planning discussions, and then we will close out the public meeting and go into executive session to review minutes from a prior executive session meeting that we had. So, to get started, we'll go right straight to the minor modifications for One and Three Boston Way. Andy, can you tell me if we have anyone representing the applicant?
Yes, I think we have Lou Minakuchi here. Lou, if you are able to unmute, you should be able to speak to the board if you'd like. I'm also happy to speak to the board about where we left off with Karen on this issue, but I see her here.
Yes. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Getting into questions, but.
Okay, well, I mean, what we could do, Lou, if it's easier for you, we'll just have Andy update everybody on the changes, because we did look at this at our last meeting. We kind of know what to expect. And I'm glad you're here, and we'll just get either confirmation or answer to questions afterwards. So, Andy, can you clarify the changes?
Sure. So hopefully you can see what's on my screen here. I get a little bit of lag on Zoom on my end, but hopefully you're seeing the GIS of the city here down on Boston Way. I've highlighted the One Boston Way project, so the primary point of discussion at the last meeting for the modification request, which I don't think was much of an issue conceptually, was that Rick had pointed out that there was a request to tie the condition for the paving of One Boston Way, which from this had gone to the end of, or 10 feet beyond the One Boston Way site, to basically tie that repaving to the end of the Three Boston Way development, because the MBTA had done some resurfacing, and the Three Boston Way project is going to have a fair amount of construction vehicles going back and forth down to that end of the site, so it really makes more sense to have the repaving of Boston Way provided by the developer, the surface repaving after the Three Boston Way development. So Karen and Caitlin and I had discussed this. Karen from Menko with Lou Minakuchi had talked about this modification following the planning board's discussion and agreed, and you have in your meeting materials the request from them to remove the condition for paving from One Boston Way and then add it to the Three Boston Way decision, again, going to 10 feet beyond the project site, in this case, Three Boston Way. That makes, I think, sense to me, satisfies the concern that was raised before, that it be tied to the Three Boston Way project at that point rather than the One Boston Way project. I think everything else in the request, my recollection was that there weren't any issues per se with those, but I'm happy to address that as well.
Okay, I just want to clarify the new language for the special condition for Three Boston Way. I believe it's incorrect, as it stated in our staff report. It says, "to a point 10 feet past the boundary with One Boston Way." I think it should say 10 feet past the boundary with Three Boston Way. Is that correct?
Yes, there, I think there was a correction or a letter or revised letter, but the letter that was most recently submitted by Three Boston Way LLC, Menko, is June 25, or sorry, June 15, and that letter is correctly written to say 10 feet past the southern boundary of Three Boston Way.
Okay, it's just that I want this motion to be correct in the minutes.
Right.
And change the language. Right now, it says no later than the receipt of a final certificate of occupancy. And we normally say before the receipt of a final certificate of occupancy. Would that be?
Agreed. We will. You're correct. We agreed. We will make that clarification in the language, so it matches what we usually write.
Okay, good. So that's what jumped out at me. Did anybody else have any concerns or corrections on this?
Bonnie, this is Don. What is the approximate square footage we're talking about?
I don't know.
I could run a quick number right now from the GIS of the, you mean, linear feet or to the square footage or surface area of the?
Let me, yeah. I'm assuming what we're talking about is not paving the area, because there's going to be construction on the second site, so why pave it? You know, plus it's a park row, we get all messed up, et cetera. Is that, that's kind of the common sense approach, right?
Right.
The idea here is to wait until they are done with construction at Three Boston Way before requiring the resurfacing, which it does not make sense. When we did the One Boston Way, the concern at that point was that after One Boston Way, the roadway get repaved or resurfaced, so that it's a nice smooth coat. Now that Three Boston Way is under construction, I guess the Office of Planning and Development would agree with the development team that it makes more sense to tie that to the end of Three Boston Way's construction. So that's what we're suggesting here, not that the condition be removed at all. In fact, it just ensures that the roadway gets completed when the, all the construction that we're going to see on Boston Way from this 40-hour project, you know, collectively is done.
Right. I mean, and to me, the only risk that we're taking on is in the unlikely de minimis possibility that the project is not, doesn't complete, is not completed, for whatever reason.
Sure, and I know.
Could be financial, it could be a fire, who knows what it was, and based upon this, then you would not be paving the first section that we anticipated. I just want to, I'm okay with that, but I just wanted to throw out that there is a risk that that can happen, because there's no drop deadline irrespective of what happens with the other facility of the project.
Yeah, understood, Don. I think the rationale here, I guess, for the office to not have a concern about that on balance is just that the resurfacing was, you know, is not in bad condition right now. So even if that, we're not going to proceed, it's not like, you know, if the, if there hadn't been work done on it to kind of clean up the surface a bit more recently, we probably wouldn't, we'd have the same concern, I guess, but.
Okay, thanks. No, sounds good.
Don, I just wanted to, as Lou Minakuchi, I just wanted to say that when we were getting One Boston Way approved, the Boston Way itself was in pretty poor condition. And the MBTA, apparently unbeknownst to any of us, including myself, totally, before we started, just before we started construction, about two and a half, three years ago, completely resurfaced Boston Way. So actually, and we used that direct access right up on Park Street for the most part. So One Boston Way is nearly in perfect condition, or they lent the One Boston Way, Boston Way is nearly in perfect condition, because it'd just been resurfaced three years ago by the MBTA, and we didn't do anything to really disrupt that. The, I think that when we do complete Three Boston Way, we're bringing down a new water line, so one of our conditions was to bring a new water line down the Boston Way, in which case we will be digging up the road, and it won't be in as good a condition as it is now, so.
No, makes sense. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good. Would anyone else like to comment on this? Okay, we're going to need two motions. The first is to delete Condition 12, which referred to paving of Boston Way from the One Boston Way Smart Growth District Plan Approval Decision. May I have a motion for that?
So move, Bonnie. Don.
Thank you. Second?
Anne, second.
Thank you, Anne. And I'll call roll for approval of that motion. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay. And then the motion is to add a special condition to the Three Boston Way Smart Growth District Plan Approval Decision. The applicant shall pave the full width of Boston Way from Parker Street to a point 10 feet past the southern boundary with Three Boston Way before the receipt of a final certificate of occupancy for Three Boston Way. I believe that's the correct wording.
Correct. Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah, I'll take a motion on that.
So move, Bonnie. It's Don.
Okay, second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, Alden, thank you. And I'll call roll on approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that is taken care of, and thank you very much, Lou, for giving us your time tonight.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Andy will update us on not only the letter from the residents of Evergreen, which has been posted, but the potential resolution to the issue of the proposed fence, which we did discuss at our last meeting, and so this is an update on that.
Okay, so hopefully folks can see on my screen here just a snapshot from my GIS system. What I've highlighted here for that area of the city, including the Evergreen project or the Port Place project, is you can see obviously the new lots, the roadway in the open space areas. What I've highlighted is the Number Two well site for the city. That's where we get some of our water supply. So up at the top of the screen, actually, in the corner, you can almost see the structure there. But that, that green highlighted parcel is the city's existing parcel. What has been discussed with the development team, obviously, in this project and as part of the project, is a larger open space parcel, number one, and another open space parcel. It's a little bit of an awkward configuration, but it wraps around the homes, and, and if you'll notice here, there's a little sliver left over. That creates this parcel A, and for those of you who weren't on the board at the time this project was approved, that parcel was carved off and created because the city had some vested interest in protecting the well, and the development team was able to provide the commonly assumed radius that the municipality would own around the well in the open space area. So the agreement during the time of permitting was that that portion of the open space would be conveyed to the city, the fee interest. So that is in process, but there was an issue that came up, which was the Water Department and the Conservation Commission had determined that there was some dumping going on, and I don't know the whole history of that. I would defer to those folks on the details, but their concern was making sure that there was a barrier for, to indicate to folks and make sure that we were preventing as much as possible dumping on the Number Two well site or even the parcel A, which is the sliver you're seeing here. That would effectively be conveyed to the city and added to the Number Two well site in terms of the water division's oversight. And so the question here was whether or not to place a split rail fence, if you will, around the arc that you see on that parcel. And the more recent discussion of that, to summarize it all for you, is the residents had expressed some concern. I think the letter reflects it, some concern about the location of that fence and its placement there. There are some other fences out there today. Just to give you another image here, this is actually a photograph from that area. You can see the lawn space. You can see a very shallow sort of swale there and then a berm going up that leading to the Number Two well site. So that parcel is kind of an arc in there, but there's not really a clear line between what is the homeowners association open space to be preserved versus the parcel A that's the city's. And there was some concern there about folks, whether it's from the development team or the residents or both, having some dumping going on on the city property behind there. It's not atypical for municipalities to find yard waste and so forth dumped across lot lines. So the concern here, the crest was a split rail fence. The residents expressed concern about that additional fence. I think there's a number of fences already out there, as you can see on the left side of the image a little bit. There are some other fences already around some of the yards. So I guess it might have been a sort of aesthetic perception that's too many fences. And so there was a discussion the last couple of days about shifting that fence out of that area and actually along the tree line, so that it's sort of hidden, if you will, make it four feet tall as opposed to sort of a taller six-foot fence, but four foot and then sort of a brown coated, vinyl coated, to kind of blend into the background. And part of the reason for that was the Water Department, when we were talking with Department of Public Services and Phil Christensen, the planning board's consulting engineer, about the stormwater management for this project. During the course of design and the development of this project, the maintenance of the swale in that area and the grass in its present condition was acknowledged to be something that's important to make sure that the drainage works properly on the site per the developer's original plans, right, to prevent there being any problems. So there was sort of agreement that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have a fence in there when you have to get a vehicle in there to do some mowing and so forth. And so there was sort of agreement that there was a logic behind moving that fence back and having that kind of blend or disappear, if you will, into the tree line, where I think it's less likely that folks would be dumping something in the open, and so that was the, the core assumption here. So my understanding is that sort of a reasonable sort of compromise between all the parties about this issue that the, you know, we want to make sure folks aren't dumping on the Water Department land. And that's kind of the latest and greatest of that issue. I'm happy to expand on that if anybody has any questions. And we're assuming the developer, by the way, is going to come back with that modification, well, with the I-95 path connection, so in the coming weeks or months.
But at this point, this is just for our information, and if we have any concerns or questions for the applicant, we'll address those when they bring in the minor modification. Is that the plan?
That's exactly correct, Bonnie. Yeah, the, we didn't want to deprive the board of the communication that had come in. We knew there were some concerns from the residents about this issue, so even though we might typically package information on a subject matter for the agenda it's on, we didn't want to wait for that, even though the formal request from the development team to deal with this detail has not come in yet.
Anything really pressing that anybody has to have answered on this right now? Okay, great. Well, thank you for the update, Andy, and that sounds like it's a reasonable solution. We'll learn more about how reasonable it sounds to the residents when the application comes through. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes for May 19. May I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion, Bonnie.
Thank you, Don. Second?
Can second that, MJ.
Thank you, MJ. Any discussion? Then I'll call the roll for approval of the motion. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Rick?
Abstaining. I wasn't present.
Okay. MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So those minutes are approved. And as I said, we'll wait till the next meeting for the minutes of June 2. So now, yes.
Bonnie, I'm sorry. This is Anne. I just wanted to note, the, we have sort of the unusual situation with Zoom meetings where the visual cues aren't quite as obvious, but we had a gentleman in the audience who had raised their hand, just for the audience, if there's anybody who's curious. Tonight's agenda doesn't have or include any sort of public comment period, because there aren't any items that are hearings or so forth. The planning board had planned on having discussions related to some particular long-range agenda items. So that's the reason for that, in case anybody's wondering or raising their hands. I'll defer the chair on any of their, you know, comments or concerns, but just in case anyone else is raising their hand. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. Correct. We only have public comment on public hearings and by exception on complex or otherwise difficult to understand other issues. So tonight really was scheduled as just a planning discussion among the board members, and I'd like to stick with that agenda. So I apologize to anybody who feels they wanted to say something about something we've already talked about. But as I said, the, if it has anything to do with Evergreen, we'll be back on that at another time. And if not, a letter to the Planning Board, care of the Planning Office could be sent. Okay, our planning discussion is going to begin with a review of the site plan review, a discussion of the site plan review section of our zoning ordinance. This was selected because it's on the project for rewriting our entire zoning code, and we felt that it would be more helpful to the planning staff if we talked about one section that we have a lot of experience with, that they could use our comments on when they do get to the point that they are ready to revise this section of the ordinance. Let me just say that tonight is an opportunity to say anything you need to about site plan review. We will go through it subsection by subsection. The Planning Office will be taking notes. Linda's going to be keeping the minutes. It's obviously going to be on the recording. So this is for future incorporation into the revision. But anything that you want to see in site plan review, and if you think that a section might refer to some other part of the ordinance, the overall zoning code, that's fine. Don't worry about it. Where it fits, just get your comments in there. That's the most important thing. We're not going to get tied up into knots about where things fit or the exact language. We'd just like to get the information out. With that in mind, I thought it would be easiest if we just go through it subsection by subsection. That being said, this would be the point where if you have any sort of overall comments about site plan review, this would be a good time to voice them. So let's just start with overall comments, if you have any. All right, then we will start with intent, if there's anything there that you want to say about site plan review getting out of the box, as it were. I might mention that, as everybody is well aware, site plan review is not a permit per se. It is more a review of the site-specific issues that we'll be looking at as we go through the various subsections. And I guess that's all I want to say about that, which is different from what we normally do, where we approve or approve with conditions or deny. In this case, we do review, work out with the applicant how they can meet the criteria in site plan review, and it's usually attached to some other permit that they are seeking or have, yeah. And it's usually done in conjunction with that, just as background. Okay, let's go to purpose. Any comments on that?
Bonnie, I would note, by the way, that there was a meeting earlier today with the Resiliency Committee, and they had asked, if anyone isn't mentioning this, David Chadfield, the committee members were interested in us trying to incorporate any resiliency criteria. So to the extent that that comes in to play as another bullet or a comment, feel free to note that as well.
Okay, would that be a good thing to mention somewhere? Don't know exactly what the language would be right here in the purpose, or is that, I think that's, I don't, I don't want to make an assumption that that is just one of the criteria we'll add later on or one of the subsections. Did you bring it up at this point because you felt like it should also fit into?
Thank you. Yeah, I did, actually. I would suggest perhaps if it's not its own bullet, and I don't have a strong preference, but where it goes, but if, I would suggest for purposes, maybe adding it to the Land Use Planning bullet or a separate one right underneath there. And I do think it would make sense to reference here. That way, it's always helpful when you have criteria in an ordinance to point back to a purpose, original public purpose that's being served by it, because if there's litigation over criteria, especially something more progressive like sustainability or resiliency issues that are newer provisions, then it's always helpful to point back to the public purpose part of the ordinance.
I would agree with you, and I'd like to see it as a separate, separate purpose statement and broaden it to sustainable development, resiliency, and energy efficiency or something to that effect, because I actually wanted to add a new category later on that would cover all of that. So if we have it in the purpose, that's a good cross-reference.
That's great. Thank you for the additional phrasing, because I agree that those are all in clear alignment.
Anyone else want to comment on this or add to it, maybe? Like, Don, who knows a lot about this?
Bonnie, literally, you took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, I'm going to change something and put in something about resiliency, and we should also consider some of the other items, i.e., you know, our net zero or sustainability, et cetera. So I think you captured it perfectly, Bonnie.
Good.
Hey, I just ask, does it, would it make sense to, in addition to referencing the 2001 master plan, to also reference other reports that we want to?
Agree. That's a great idea. Thank you about the, there are other sections in the ordinances where we've referenced not only the council orders to adopt the ordinance, but also the ordinance itself. Sometimes you reference either the master plan or a so-called specific plan, like the resiliency plan that was recently adopted, so, you know, developed by the city, so I agree completely. We could add that phrasing to that bullet to reference those two specific plans as well.
Actually, shouldn't it be 2017 master plan? This is the ordinance as it exists today.
It is. I'm sorry, Beth. I didn't, I didn't know the year you had noted, but yes, you're right.
No, and I was going to recommend just having some language in there saying as updated, you know, periodically.
I agree.
Okay, anything else on purpose? Andy, could you move us to the next section? Aplicability. All right. I'll get us started. What do you guys think about changing the determination for major or minor from five or more units to four or residential units? Because five or more is, is limiting to just some rather large projects that are very few and far between. I'm wondering if capturing projects of four or more residential units would be appropriate.
So Bonnie, this is Rick. I is an echo. I'm hearing an echo. I don't know if everybody else is, but. I wonder, since you raised that point, there's clearly a difference between single and two-family dwellings and everything else. So I think, I mean, obviously, anything is a arbitrary cutoff to a certain point. And I guess the question is, if we have, if we, if we use the cutoff as four or more, then we've got the singles and twos, which are by themselves, and then three, and then four or more. So, you know, it's almost, you could always go to three or more. I guess, I don't know how many permits we have in each category, how many permits there are for three families, four families, and five or more families. It would be, you know, it would be helpful to know what the, what the implication would be for workload and for bringing people in. But I think there's, if you start thinking about four, I think there's, there's an argument to be made for three as well.
And Rick, we could try to gather with the zoning administrator in the building office some data. If you're, if you're looking for some specific breakdowns, we can try to get some data from their, you know, their sources, obviously.
I know, just as a comparison, when we redid the site plan regulations in Portsmouth, I think it was five or more, and they decided to go to, it was before I was actually working as a planner there, but they decided to go to three or more, because they found that there were so many three and four family developments, and those were the ones that were causing the most headaches in terms of making sure the development was good. So I don't know whether that's the case here or not. And I don't think we have nearly the level of development that Portsmouth had, so I'm sure it's not, not the same situation. But I think it'd be interesting to look at to see whether four is the right cutoff or whether it should be three or five. Did you have a reason for four?
I just thought five was too much and I only dropped it to four, but as I think about it with your help, three or more. We have a lot of small developments and we're more likely to have three and then we can get into site plan review on these issues. I'm just wondering if site plan review is overkill on a project of three units? That's the only thing, that's where I would want some more experience with how this plays out because we really don't want to be overly regulating. So we need to know that there's enough of a potential problem that three or more makes sense. Otherwise I'd say four, just because well, I think about Hancock Street and I'm trying not to just focus on the most recent projects, but there are likely to be more fours than fives. More destruct, more disruptive.
This is Andy, I would also note, by the way, that one of the things that Jennifer and I see, you know, been thinking about these types of things is ZBA, there's only one of appeals oftentimes will end up having some of those small scale project for them because they'll follow in the more dense areas of the city. So that, that is also another, oftentimes a review or, or protection of some type, at least for the review of what's going on there.
Right, but how much, how much do they get into stormwater management and lighting? And those are sort of the obvious things, but design, other things that site plan review looks at.
Sure, it's about what you make and mainly I would say is not because they don't have some authority to look at those things with the type of relief that is being requested. Because oftentimes it's a special permit for non-conformities to make a modification or variance. And then the, the board, I think in more recent time has been starting to look at the types of site conditions, landscape conditions as type of, as parts of their review, they in the past, to your point, Bonnie, haven't looked at some of those details a lot, like the way that the planning board has. And they have the ability though, and they're in the granting of relief to look at those details. And so you raise a valid point, which is they don't necessarily look at all the site details. They tend to look at more at the structure involved, but they have been in more recent time, looking at the neighborhood effects and things like landscaping. I know from a stormwater perspective, the, you talk with the city engineer, there's sort of a 10,000 square foot threshold in which you need a stormwater permit from the Department of Public Services or DPS. But they tend to think that the smaller scale projects aren't the, the ones sort of worth pursuing, if you will, from a stormwater management perspective.
Well, I would just like the staff to look at closely if you, when you consider three or more rather than four or more. If even four or more is acceptable, that we're not overly regulating with, with requiring site plan review at that level of development. Okay, other comments about applicability?
I guess one comment is a thousand square feet of construction, really a major project. Me, a thousand square feet is, you know, a very small dwelling unit, so I don't know whether that, whether that makes sense or whether we should increase that one.
Yeah, Rick, I agree completely with that one. I do think in today's day and age, I don't, you know, I'd have to go back to the date this was reviewed at 2002. But even then, a thousand square feet isn't a significant amount.
It's interesting that the minor project threshold is 5,000 square feet, less than 5,000 square feet. So I, I almost wonder whether 5,000 square feet should be the, the threshold for a, for a major project.
Yeah, I would concur. I would note, by the way, that I don't need to go into the details of it, but it's sort of minutia. But one of the things that Jennifer and I have talked about and I've noticed, you know, the time that I've been here is the major projects, A, and the minor projects, B, they don't, they don't necessarily capture everything, right? So it's a little bit, there's a little bit of inconsistency sort of between the way they're treated. And I think Rick explained out one of them, it might be something we could reconcile better, but but I agree with the, the threshold adjustment.
There was something that I saved from Jennifer. I don't remember in what relationship she brought it up, but she said that existing uses are not covered. So if there's any, if there's a modification to the site with no addition of square footage, they're not covered at all. So she was recommending that we add under major for existing uses, any modification of the site, even if they're not adding square footage would trigger site plan review. And I'd like to put that in there as a spa, as a space holder for her to clarify that when the time comes for you all to review this.
And any modification of the site?
Yeah, so if they're doing something inside that I don't know, could add to drainage issues, I don't know. Anyway, she, she just felt like, or more traffic. So she was talking about curb cuts. She had a list of things that she felt could be affected, parking. They might be. Somehow she felt like that was enough of a concern and she can't be here tonight to, to clarify it. That we should put something in there to cons, at least consider.
So that's, that would be, you know, kind of a placeholder to say, yeah, come back and look at this and see what kinds of site changes would require site plan review.
Yeah, it might even be another number five under A. With some clarification, it needs some language, definitely.
So with this, how would this relate to that project that we saw over a period of a couple of months on High Street backing out of Otis Place? Is that the kind of thing you're talking about where they were changing the, the surfacing and landscaping of the parking area?
Yeah. I mean, we, we looked at all the relevant issues without actually doing an official site plan review, sort of like what Andy was saying with the ZBA looking at non-conformities and they could expand it anytime because they have the authority to do that.
What was our authority to look at that? Why did that come before us if it wasn't?
It was, it was a modification to a previous decision on the building.
Okay, so like a special private modification?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
So we picked it up anyway. I think I just, you know, in courtesy to Jennifer to make sure she gets this in there, she needs it. If she thinks it's important enough to have sent a note and I saved it, I just want to put it in there as a placeholder. Okay, this meeting is not just Rick and me talking to Andy and everybody nodding their heads. If you really don't have anything to say, don't, don't take up airspace, obviously, but I don't want you to be put off. And I don't know any other way to do it other than to just say it. So chime in when you have something you'd like to say. Shall we move on to review procedure then, under 15D?
Yes.
I bet everybody's going to agree with me on this one, or at least have something to say. Why do we keep the pre-application? Oh, I'm sorry, why do we do the completeness vote on applications if the staff make all the determinations? We've rolled our eyeballs on this enough. Is there some justification for that or can we just drop the whole thing? And what do people know about that?
For the office, we certainly have no problem and agree with that, Bonnie.
Anybody going to fight me on dropping completeness votes?
So where, where is the completeness vote?
I don't know, I just did a bullet under there, it must be in there somewhere.
Yeah.
One of the procedures. Be farther down.
Oh, pin number two, I'm sorry, number two.
Yep. But I would like to retain the option for the planning board to request further information during the public hearing process. So please don't throw out that baby with the bathwater.
Yes, yes, agreed.
Because there could be wa, well, not waivers, but there could be further information that we need, like traffic reports are a good example. We decide that it's more critical than they thought it was and we want a traffic report. So we need to be able to ask for other information as we go through the public hearing process.
Agreed.
So just to be clear, if I mean, there are certain things that are listed as required in an application. And presumably if we held a completeness hearing or meeting, then we could waive any required submissions at that point. But the staff doesn't have the authority to waive any, any required submissions, so if somebody didn't want to submit, for example, a full traffic report because they felt, you know, like the other people we've, we've talked to haven't haven't felt that their project was big enough to require a traffic report. And, or it was a community impact report, whatever it is. And so if they they could not come, they would still, it would still be the equivalent of a completeness meeting, right? Because they would have to come to us to request permission not to submit it. And then wait another meeting until they actually, until we actually scheduled through the hearing. Because they wouldn't know whether we were going to agree to their request. And until, until they talked to us about it, is that, is that correct?
Yes, Rick, actually, it's 100% correct. And actually, it's consistent with an amendment that's part of the current package that we're making some tweaks to that's before the council. Which has a provision in there, speaking of the fact that applications need to be complete. What we call out in there, and I think we might be tweaking the language a bit, but it basically says in essence, you, to your point. It doesn't matter whether it's ZBA or the planning board. You need to ask for the waiver in advance, but if you've got that waiver from the board or the, you know, department hasn't been applicable. You can, you can then proceed your application before the board. In the case, like you pointed out here, staff would not have the authority to waive that requirement and, but we could, to Bonnie's point, we certainly could save the board some time by, when it's a complete application per the ordinance. You know, processing the application and getting it on your agenda for a hearing rather than throwing it on your agenda to have you effectively vote what we've determined in the office, which is that it has all materials the ordinance calls for.
Well, could we do it by, could we do it by exception? In other words, there is no completeness vote. The staff reviews the application and if the applicant is requesting waivers. Could we vote on those in the first meeting? One of trying to avoid is all those long drawn out reviews with some of the applicants who have very detailed oriented planners on their staff hired to present. So they go through this, they go through the whole application, presentation to help us understand why they need the waivers. So I'm trying to avoid, that's the problem I'm trying to solve. So that's why I'm suggesting that staff review it and then by exception, bring to us an application before it's complete on their end because they want to request waivers. And then they would know that and they want to know that before they come in to talk to us about the whole thing, so.
That's, I think that's what I'm saying, Bonnie, I think that if we, if we get a do away with the completeness vote, then in the application that is complete goes right to a public hearing. But if somebody wants to have a less than complete application, they would then have to come to a separate meeting to get our approval to receive it. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Right, except that we then have to go through the whole application to understand why they want the waiver. Or effectively, you know, if they were really good at summarizing, they could do it in half the time. So I'm trying to avoid that. Is it inappropriate to actually open the public hearing? And if they want to request waivers to do it at that time as part of the presentation, the first presentation of their full application?
So, so Bonnie, this is Don. I, we may all be saying the same thing, but I vividly remember, perhaps incorrectly, but I believe correctly. This was what one of the applicant's attorneys is that if we vote a package they, they for, for completeness. And if they're requesting waivers, we can still vote the, the application complete and it does not prevent us once we open the hearing to say, well, even though we, we, we said that you didn't need a traffic study or we said without you, you put a waiver in for traffic studies part of your application. But we now, but we now want that traffic study. I was under the impression we were not precluded from doing that.
Correct, correct, but this is, this is the first, the prior step to that, which is if their application includes three or four waivers, the staff do not have the jurisdiction, the authority to approve those waivers. So they have to bring
But they're, they're approving their, that they, well, first of all, we, we could put something in, in here, we're discussing that. But, but I was under the impression, or I would be okay with the staff approving that these waivers are acceptable to be viewed as application completeness. And then when it comes to us, the applicant is at their, their risk and we say, well, you know, we now want this information. But this way it doesn't have to come before us with an application completeness review, it just comes when the application is there.
Yeah, yeah, you just said it better than I did. That's really what I want. And I don't know if that's procedurally desirable or even legal to do. And does it cause us potential problems down the road? Andy, Rick?
Yeah, it's just the mechanics of how you go about doing it. You, you can prevent it from being an issue and we can talk in more detail as need to be about, you know, situations like that. But you can certainly avoid, I think, some of the issues you're discussing. So you could, to Don's point, speed up the review process and not waste time on your meetings for something staff can determine is complete. And yet, to Bonnie's point, you can, you can, you know, reduce the amount of time they're presenting before the board. Because if they do have to come in and ask for a waiver, which the ordinance would call them to go to the board for, they can be required to provide a brief overview of their project. And then to Bonnie's point, you don't need to review the entire application. You just need to know the rationale for the granting of the waiver in that particular project. And then to the point you were just making a second ago, as long as you make it clear at the outset, when you're granting the waiver at the beginning for the submission, that's just to allow the clock to start ticking in the application. So the only reason we talk about this completeness vote is we don't want the clock to be ticking, staff to be wasting time on an application, legal requirements to be moving ahead in terms of the board having to take a vote. If the application, the applicant hasn't even provided you adequate information. So in this case, you could specify that just for the purposes of a complete application, you're waiving the submission for, of a, let's say, a traffic study based on the product parameters. But the board reserves the right to call for such traffic study during the hearing if it's a later determines. So it's really just, I think, a mechanics of how you clarify that when you're, when you're doing it.
Okay, everything?
Yeah, go ahead. Raise my concern, my only concern is, so when this completeness determination is made, whether by us or by the staff, it starts the click, kick
Yeah, the clock.
Of the clock, sorry. So I just want, I would want to make sure that there's a process in place so that it has to be some sort of formal determination and we know when the clock starts ticking or the staff does. You know, I think with a vote, it's clean and then we know. But if somebody, you know, says offhand in the office, you know, yeah, it's complete. We don't want that to constitute the beginning of the ticking of the clock, I guess. So I would just want to make sure that there's some procedure in place so that the planning office is keeping the planning office is keeping track and has a, you know, set process for.
Yes.
Determinations.
Yes, we, we agree on that 100%.
So, so here's.
We document what, what the dates are that things have been reviewed or approved. Yeah.
So here's a, maybe a compromised or middle ground position. What if, instead of having a, a separate meeting to have the completeness vote, when it's some, when we had something on the agenda? Actually, this is how we did it in Portland. You have a, you had a vote on the completeness of the application, and then another vote to open the public hearing. It could be the same night. And so that would be, that would prevent you from ticking, starting the clock ticking if you had, if you felt there was a serious deficiency in the application.
Yeah, and a great, great, we could do it that way. But again, I don't know that we're accomplishing very much more than it's sort of resulting in the same situation, which is that you've decided to either grant a waiver or not. And, and if it meets the ordinance criteria for submission, it's not really clear why the board has to spend time on that administrative action or that, you know, voting, if it's really administrative act, whether or not it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
Well, the requirements of the ordinance are a specific list of things, and there's a waiver to waive one of those items. I mean, I, I don't, maybe it's not as big a deal as it seems to me, but it seems like there's, it opens us up to starting the clock ticking on something that might be, you know, might be contentious.
Well, we won't know if it's contentious until we hear the application and their rationale for not for asking for the waiver, right? So that's what I'm trying to, you know, avoid is a double presentation. If the clock starts ticking when the staff have said it's complete and have set up a date for the first public hearing, they can always ask for a continuance if they run out of time because of some major disagreement on a particular waiver request.
I, I'm just noticing that on section 15F is about the waiver submission requirements, which comes after this whole review procedure. It seems like it's out of order. And maybe that's where I'm getting hung up, because I was looking at that section we were looking at, which has got a process for completeness. But how can you have a completeness review if you, if you wait till section 15F to, to look at waivers? So maybe that's, maybe it's what needs to happen is somehow merge section 15F back into section 15D. So that it's clear what the process is for granting waivers. Because, because the planning board has to grant the waivers. It's clear, it's clear that you know, the, the planning, the planning staff can determine that a waiver is appropriate, but it can't approve the waiver. The planning board has to approve the waiver. So it seemed like that maybe moving section 15F back up to 15D would make that all clearer.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. Under eight, what was eight? C eight was back up under review procedures?
Bonnie, if I could, just before we move on from the point that Rick was making.
Yeah, I thought we were done. Sorry.
Sorry, no, my apologies. I was trying to pull up a section here from the recent amendment that we have that we're looking at before the council. Just because it goes to Rick's point. There are a couple of sections in the ordinance that overlap each other in terms of what they're dealing with. To Rick's point, and one of the provisions that we put in the rewrite packages before the council right now is this bullet that you should be seeing at the top. And we were talking about tweaking some of the language in here from, from what's currently before the council a little bit. I think we talked about rephrasing a bit, but the bottom line is, I guess our hope was to try to consolidate, to Rick's point, that F and D section into really just one section of the ordinance that deals with the administration part. But any rate, we're happy to do it anywhere, but we, we agree that consolidating that point for waivers into one section makes more sense.
Yeah, but this now, the way this is stated is the old way, which is before we kind of can accept a formal submission, all waivers have to be approved. And that's back to what we were doing. So that's, the section would have to change if, if we're in agreement that waivers can be heard at the first hearing of the formal application.
Right, but if you, if, if I understood Rick's point, requiring or having those done the night of the hearing, part of the reason why some folks ask for the waiver in advance is because they might need time to prepare one of those submissions if the, if the board determines it's required. So, you know, traffic studies, for instance, sometimes take some time. So I think that part of the reason why from the applicant's perspective, they like the ability to find out whether or not the board needs that, so they can have time to prepare it. Whereas if you hold off on making that determination until the night of the hearing, you're still doing the same thing, which is determining whether or not to grant the waiver. But you've not allowed the most amount of time for the adjustment that, that someone might want to make in, in preparing an adequate package.
Right, so is there going to be change to this wording that we're looking at right now if you decide to go for, I mean, if you, we're doing the mini, this, this piece is part of the joint public hearing that's up right now, right, on the mini reform?
Right, exactly. So we, we want to basically merge this conversation we're having right now literally into the, the amendment that's before the council, if you will, to Rick's point. So that it is consistent to what we're talking about right now for sections F and D of site plan review. You know, we want to basically make sure they're consistent to your point and to Rex. So wherever you end up and wherever we end up in this dialogue, we want to make that verbiage consistent and not have inconsistent verbiage in any other section.
Right, so we're going to have this discussion about waivers and application procedure around section 12B.
Correct, right?
Oh, no, it's section, I'm sorry. Section 10D.
Yes, number 10.
10D, it's 10D. So that has to be brought up in our next joint public hearing.
So, so this section, I, this just went right over my head when we talked about it at the last public hearing.
Yeah.
What was, what is the, what's the reason for adding this? Because this sounds like this is even stricter than our current site plan review, because it says that they, you can't come to us until you have approved waiver, right?
Right, yeah, this is actually, I mean, a lot of this is actually consistent with the way the ordinances should be implemented and interpreted and applied today already. So the, the essentially, you know, this, if you looked into the staff and said, right, we have some, let's say there was a complete disconnect between boards and staff. The board arguably would not want staff to be stamping in an application and running the clock from the city clerk's office on, on timeframes to decisions and so forth. If an application does not require a call for, or does not have in it what the ordinance calls for. So we're just trying to make it clear to applicants that there should be no expectation that, that staff or boards are going to be spending time on applications that don't meet the minimum requirements of your application forms or the callouts in the ordinance for, for whatever the application or permit may be. In this instance, we're just noting here that if you want to submit an application and avoid the requirements of the ordinance, you should ask the board first so that the clock is not running. And because that, otherwise, the board could potentially be penalized for, for, you know, that, that situation. So it makes more sense to me to, if everybody knows what the rules of the roads are, and what the requirements are, they adhere to that and they submit. And if they want an exception, it's not unreasonable for them to meet with you two weeks in advance to ask for the waiver. So that, that, that your clock is not running essentially against you.
But that's just what we're saying we don't want to do. I mean, that's what we've been talking about, the fact that if they submit a request for a waiver, we have to listen to the, a good portion of their, their application presentation in order to determine whether or not the waiver is required, we could say, no, you don't need, we will accept your waiver, go put forth your formal application, and then we have to listen to it all over again. So I, I'm still not understanding why we can't deal with waivers once we get started with the permitting process. And if there needs to be an extension, we agree to that because they need more time to submit.
I, I think you're going to end up with more conflicts and debates and time spent at meetings on legal interpretation and, and debates over that issue than you would with spending. To your point, the applicant does not deserve necessarily an entire night of presentation if they need to ask for a waiver. You can simply say to them when they come in to ask for a waiver in advance of the submission of the application, you have five minutes to present your overview of your, the scope of your project and why you think a waiver is appropriate. And if, if they can't summarize that in a short amount of time, I don't, I don't know that you need a full application presentation. I can't recall one where that was needed, but, but I don't think you need that level of detail to know whether or not, for instance, the scale of a project calls for a traffic study or not.
But somebody else weigh in on this, because I don't agree with that. I think by the time we get all the information we need, we're just back to where we started from. And if that's the case, and if we need to approve waivers before the formal submission of the application, then let's just leave everything the way it is. And this conversation has been enlightening, but I can't make an argument to get rid of it because it's not legally possible, I guess.
I, I think procedurally, there's something we could do to make it better, which is if we haven't opened a public hearing, we don't have to hear from the applicant. The applicant can give us a written request, and we basically make our determination based on that request.
Could we ask for a couple of comments on clarification if we wanted it and keep them?
If we wanted to, if we wanted to, but you know, we could, we could, it might be just this, the most efficient thing, and to force them into actually being clear is to say, you know, this is not a public hearing, because I think that once you start having that back and forth, then you get the public involved, and you could get the public involved, and we don't want to do that. So I would suggest that, you know, if we want to have, if you want to deal with a waiver, because I understand that we could, we could be backing ourselves into a corner by accepting an application without this, this not complete and starting the clock ticking. But if we just, if we just have the applicants submit it in writing, and we make our determination based on a written request.
Yeah, and that's literally what this says here. So we would be consistent with this first submission for many reform. So clean up the site plan review statement that says is consistent with this.
Yeah.
That way, we have more control over what they can say, because if we ask for it, we'll get, we'll get what we deserve. And if we can just look at the written application, whether they're in the room or not, and make a determination, then we're done. And they can come back with their formal submission when they're ready. All right, that was a lot of words to get to that point, but I think we got it. So let's go back to site plan review. Thank you, Rick. And just note that definitely need to merge the two sections that we talked about earlier and clarify that it needs to be in, the waiver request needs to be in writing.
Understood, yep.
Okay. There was one other, yeah, are we ready to move on?
Sure, I wasn't sure which section you wanted to pick up with at this point.
Well, I'm still here. There's a section C.
Okay.
Where am I? And back in, I think I'm still in D review procedure. Is there a section C? Yeah, there is. There's something I've never done before, and I never heard of it. Do we ever use the option to request a joint public hearing with the ZBA? And if, and why is it in here? And do we want to keep it?
Yeah, I can frankly not recall a time when that's been done in the time that I've been here. But you know, I don't know, I can't think of many instances in which that would end up aligning. We certainly see applicants occasionally going back and forth between the two boards based on the jurisdictions that each might have on a project. But I haven't, can't say that I've used it, seen this provision used thus far. I certainly have no objection. It's like the city council meeting with the planning board and discussing a zoning change together. That, that might end up having some beneficial overlap in the discussions. But I have never seen this provision really used.
I think it's C eight, if you want to scroll down, and people will know what we're talking about. Yeah. With zoning boards of appeal and the permit granting authority for special permit or use variance, the planning board may request a joint public hearing. Now, we've, I mean, again, Hancock Street, that worked out fine. They just went back and forth. I don't know if it would have saved any time if we had all been there together, but I think the jurisdictions were, were separate enough. But they had, the decisions had to be coordinated. So I just assume, pull this out. I just don't see any point for it unless somebody else does.
Right. I would agree. And frankly, there's nothing precluding either board from asking the other to coordinate on the night of a hearing. So.
Right, yeah.
So in, in that regard, look at the next one. The next one assumes that we can grant site plan approval before a variance is granted. And I don't think that's appropriate at all. I think that, I think that the variant should happen before site plan.
Well, what we did the last time with Hancock Street was we started talking. Well, no, that was, that wasn't site plan review.
But this one says, in order to apply for a variance, you had, it has a, that has a and a site plan approval, you submit the approved site plan.
Yeah, I would agree.
It, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, because effectively, the planning board wouldn't be in a position to prove, to approve a site plan that needed a variance and hadn't yet obtained one. So I, I would agree. I think that language should be adjusted the way Rick says.
I would, I, I think you should just delete that section.
Yeah, frankly, it's not really necessary. The operation of the other pieces of the ordinance and the permits that are required effectively makes those things jive in, in a way that, as you point out, this provision doesn't actually make a lot of sense.
Okay, anything else in this section? The E, materials for review. Anything there for anybody?
This is MJ. I have one question at under five. Further down, 5.1. There. Exterior material, including trim and colors. I don't think we actually have a right to say what colors things are.
Think you're right. We got a lot more important things to deal with, right?
Well, and anybody can always just repaint whatever they want, and it's not something we've ever asked for, like if they just submit line drawings, we don't necessarily get colored renderings, you know?
Guess what? We did that on Boston Way. We had quite a discussion about that.
I would say there are certain instances in which you might want to retain the ability, the right to take a look at those details. I would agree to the point that was just made there. And in the case of the ZBA or even historical districts, is oftentimes the, the limit stops at, you know, colors, right? And that, that's, you know, the owner's discretion, if you will. But, but I think in this case, given that you're seeing sometimes these site plan review pieces come with architectural review for, say, the downtown or some other area of the city, like the 40-yard district, or of course, that has a whole sexual ordinance devoted to it. But even the Story Avenue area, you may want to make sure that things jive a little better, even though that's something that you might want to use a lot of caution looking at.
It probably doesn't come up in the little ones, but something as big as Boston Way, it was in our face.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bonnie.
Yeah, so I guess we ought to hold on to it. A good point, because we probably just don't bother about it in the smaller ones.
Right. Or you can require it.
Yeah. Okay, here's an interesting thing. Look at six. Elevations or renderings of new construction, renovation or expansion or model may be provided at the option of the applicant. Why not at the option of the planning board?
I would agree.
That like came right at me.
Yeah, that seems to make sense.
I would even go so far as to say, require the elevations as normal, but the board may add its discretion call for 3D, or even in this case, depending on the scenario, just, yeah.
Definitely.
I mean, Waterfront West was an example of where we really wanted to see the model and be able to play around with it a bit, so.
Yeah. Good point. Well, that'll be an improvement. Boy, it really. I don't know about the rest of you. I mean, I, I zip through these things when, when, when we have an application. but this has forced me to really look at it, um, a lot more closely, which means that the next time we have an application, Evan helped them. We're going to be really well prepared on site plan review, even if these issues don't get, you know, resolved into rewrites at the moment, we can still use this knowledge. Okay. What else here on submitted materials for review?
Well, there's a, um, there's kind of a disconnect, I think, between the materials submitted for review, which say the plan show, show under five, the plan to show pedestrian bicycle and vehicular traffic flow patterns. And there's another place where it doesn't talk about bicycle, just talks about pedestrian vehicle. I was just trying to find that. It was a standard, I think. I can't remember. I just saw. The traffic, the traffic impact study under, under B four. So that, that just talks about pedestrian vehicular. So I think that there's, so one of the things that we're asking in the show pedestrian bicycle and vehicular, the, the traffic study should show traffic pedestrian bicycle and vehicular also. And then, um, I don't know whether we want to say anything about trucks.
What do you want to say about trucks?
Well, it's oftentimes you require a, a truck turning template to show the trucks can make, can actually make the turns. And I don't know whether we do that by informal requirement or whether there's a required, whether we actually require them to provide that. I haven't, haven't noticed that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I agree with Rick. We should probably call that out in here just as a baseline, but, um, mechanically what's happened is it's been pretty much consistency over the, the time that I've been here anyway, um, is the fire department, Steve Bradbury, um, we'll take a look at those turning movement plans as would say Phil Christensen or the engineering department. Um, but we'll typically call for that, uh, review with the fire department because they have the larger vehicles. Um, and, um, and then provide comments to you or even, uh, working with Phil early on in the process. So that effectively the plan you end up with is one that, uh, the fire department feels like it can get a truck through. Um, so effectively we have a way we're doing it, but to your point, maybe the order should call that out as a required submission.
If we, if we have a way of handling it, I don't think we need to handle it in the regs. Cause there'll be, it's one of those things that they'll be asked for later on and they'll, they'll provide. But I, I guess I just suggested, um, do we have bicycle in both places, not only the submissions, but also the impact study.
I, I 100% agree with that.
Anything else on, um, materials for review? All right. Moving on to G, site plan review criteria. Here we go. Our favorite one right at the top. Community character.
Uh, this, this to, uh, Bonnie, to the point I made, uh, earlier on, the residency committee mentioned today. This might be a place to add, like you were saying at the beginning, we mentioned the purpose section, the resiliency. If, uh, if we were to do that, I think it would make sense here to have one of the bullets speak to residency. Um, and we can, uh, I know that the presenting community members might be providing us, you, uh, the planning board and the office planning developments, some of their particular thoughts on what those bullets should be, uh, based on our discussion earlier today.
Yeah, I was going to suggest a new category G sustainable development and those words I used earlier as a placeholder. Um, it should also, I know resiliency people are gonna, um, provide some language as you say, but I think we should also reference something like, uh, lead building ratings and decide which level of certification would be, um, appropriate. There are various levels in there, and I think the minimal level is what's been stated, but, um, in the past, but I think we probably should go higher now that we're more into sustainable building. And any other criteria that are used from the energy advisory committee, to get us to net zero energy goal by the dates, um, agreed by the city. So all of that would go into that, um, new category to build on what you were suggesting, Andy.
Yeah. Thank you, Bonnie, for mentioning that. Cause I know that, uh, to your point, the advisory, the, uh, energy advisory committee had asked for that very specific thing. That, um, if we're making changes to the zoning provisions for the boards and what they review, um, to try to pull in, like you said, um, you know, references to net zero expectations or lead or anything else that might be the appropriate standards. I know over the last couple of years, when I, um, did a couple of meetings that I've been there, uh, with them, um, for the subject matter, there were some discussions of what those requirements should be, um, sort of become, um, impractical for people to incorporate in say smaller scale projects. Um, for instance, you may not be able to make a, a, a certain project net zero, but you might be able to show that, um, you're making it as passive, you know, uh, as possible. Um, and then, uh, using renewable sources, for instance, you know, for the, the actual grid, uh, source. So, um, you know, they had some dialogue about that. They might have some thoughts and we can overlap here, but I uh, wholeheartedly agree with, uh, capturing all of that underneath the new G.
Uh, I also think, um, adding to that is to determine what are absolute requirements and what are, you know, the difference between shall and may. Uh, to your point, so that there are, now that we know more than we did a few years ago about what needs to be done, even in smaller projects, there, uh, could be some absolute requirements that we want all of them to meet. And then, um, the rest of them could fall into the may category, may meet, um, so that we can discuss it with them. Cause right now there's no teeth in it. And I think somebody brought that up at one of our meetings earlier that we can ask them, but they wheedle, wheedle their way out of it all the time. So I think we just need a little more teeth in it.
A little more teeth in, in what, Bonnie?
In the, in the, um, criteria and potentially in the performance standards, just like we were putting resiliency and sustainability in the purpose section and we're adding it here. Um, in the criteria, I think we should also add it into the development of performance standards. And maybe what I just said is more appropriate there where, um, yeah, where, where there's certain things they must meet. Um, maybe we make some, and this is, you know, going to be done later on when staff get into this topic, but, um, there may be some that are adjustable for different size projects, but are absolutes versus, um, other, other, um, standards that would be more flexible.
Is, is that something that would go under the mandatory conditions in, uh, 15L or you think, or does it apply just to, you know, this part?
Actually, and later on in H, development and performance standards where you really have to tick the boxes.
Yeah. Uh, by the way, just to, for clarification, uh, the mandatory condition section is actually meant to speak to, uh, things that the boards are required to place as conditions on the projects, as opposed to what the board, uh, earlier on, these earlier sections for a site plan review criteria or performance standards, which is, um, the applicant actually getting the board's approval, um, for the plan they've proposed. So the, the performance standard, uh, or the mandatory conditions are about the, uh, or this intended, was intended to be, um, you know, the planning board must place conditions addressing X, Y, and Z.
Okay. Thanks.
Can we back up to community character? Um, five A. Or A five, I guess it is. Um, I'm suggesting that this statement, um, is not helpful. It talks about being located within the national historic district, consistent with architectural style, scale, et cetera. That district includes 2,200 structures. There's no.
I agree. I think it's to say the neighborhood in context, right? Not the entire district.
That's right. So you've got that already in six is more about the neighborhood and the, and the area surrounding it. You know, the, the site and the area surrounding it, which could also use some adjusting, but five, I think needs to come out. I think that was just not well thought out at all. I don't know who was smoking what when they put that in there.
And, uh, Bonnie, were you, were you suggesting removing that or just tweaking the language?
No, remove it. I don't think it's helpful. The historic district is a, is a big area. We can use it for planning purposes or whatever. We've got it in the master plan, but site plan review needs much more specificity. And I think you get that in six. And even there, we run into some trouble. I was talking to Rick about this earlier today. The immediate neighborhood and surrounding area sort of doesn't fly when you think about what we might want to do with story have.
Yeah, that would, if, if we had followed that, we would never have allowed the institution for savings on story avenue, because it certainly doesn't fit in with the surroundings, the most beautiful building up there.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a very good point.
And I remember, um, when Nick was, uh, negotiating with the, with the, uh, Woodman Way tall buildings there. They're a different colored and have peaked roofs. I mean, his hands would have been tied if he had to do that. So we really need to think carefully about what this means. We have enough experience now to know, um, what won't work. Problem is what will work.
Yeah.
And that varies by neighborhood and surrounding area. Uh, that's the complication here to find some language that will give us the, um, authority to make something happen while the, we have the flexibility to work area by area.
Um, I, I'd like to comment, I think in number six, it's like one long run in a sentence. It just seems like, I think the things that you're saying, Bonnie, can be cleared up if we just kind of break that down a little bit better. Just the language is very, um, vague to me.
Yep. Yeah, I agree.
And again, following up on what Bonnie said, you know, four, I think is probably not, we probably don't want to have that in there. Unless we can rewrite it. So it says what we it's, it's in harmony with or better than the architectural style of adjacent buildings.
I, I would prefer to keep some provision in there at least, uh, but like to Rick's point, maybe adjust the wording, but, but not to lose the essence, which is that you have the authority to look at the context.
Well, we don't have to, I mean, if, if there's some key points you want to include, that's fine, but we don't need to spend time wordsmithing it tonight.
Right, right.
Do we want to move on to any other sections here? Um, anybody have input? I mean, um, Ricky, you're already starting to talk about traffic, parking and public gas access. Um, that's where you wanted to add in bicycles in that section or did I miss?
Actually, this is a different place too. There is, so there are three different places.
Here's another one for you, just in case you didn't see it.
This is good. This is okay. This is fine.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the criteria are the, 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 the real strength of this is going to be in the development standards.
Okay. Well, if, if that's a, if that's the point, then why don't we move on to development standards? Cause that's what, what makes or breaks the effectiveness of our site plan, uh, review decision. Rick, I'm gonna let you take over.
I guess it's just a, as a general point, uh, the development standards here are a mix of standards and guidelines. You know, the standards are things that you have to do. So they have, use the word shell. And the guidelines are the things that should or, um, there are some other words that are used here like that were feasible and so forth. So I almost think that there should be a, like an introductory paragraph. And I'm not going to write it now, but an introductory paragraph that says in the following section, things that say show are standards that all developments must, um, conform to. And things that say should are, um, additional guidelines, uh, that we're giving you to tell you what we'd like to see. And you know, you, you'll see very quickly going through this that there are quite a few, sh- shells. And then there were things that may or should and that kind of thing. So I just think it's, it probably should be, clarified that this is not just standards, but standards and guidelines.
Agreed. And that, that was actually a point when we talked about the 40 yard district, uh, we actually had to, uh, match the district. We had to clarify those enough for the state to, uh, feel that it was consistent with the act.
Yeah, I was thinking about that too, Andy. Um, we, um, we've had experience doing that. So I don't see any problem with doing it here. And I like the idea of having introductory paragraph, because that sets the scene and then that keeps us clean all the way through when those get changed. Any specific ones, Rick, that you wanted to pull out for discussion?
I've got a ton of them.
You know, just the more important ones.
So here's one, uh, numbered A. 10, I think it's A 10. Yes. So this is one of those, those things, except where physical constraints, site configuration or safety considerations preclude strict compliance. No parking or loading shall be submitted, permitted within the required front yard setback. I would take out everything before the word no. Um, you know, I did, I think that I, I can't imagine where there are issues. And I was trying to imagine places in, in Newburyport where physical constraints would require you to have parking in the front yard or safety considerations would require you to parking in the front yard, parking and loading, no S. And I, I really feel that that's, we could get rid of that whole loosey goosey language and just make it a strict standard.
I agree.
All right. Let's think about an example. Down at, um, the rotary, that five unit, um, structure that replaced Leo's pizza. They argue that they wanted some parking in the front to show that they were in business.
Right. That's, that's, they couldn't get a waiver, they couldn't get a waiver under this provision. They would have, because it wasn't site configuration, safety considerations, or, or whatever else it was, physical constraints. It was just their desire to show parking spaces.
So they could apply for a waiver and, and convince us that that was important.
Well, there's a good question. There, there, that's a, that's a, actually, thank you for raising it. It's a very fundamental question. I don't think there's any, any provision here for the planning board to grant waivers. This is, this is zoning. This is not, uh, subdivision regulations. So, uh, is there any, I didn't see any, any provision, and maybe I missed it, for the planning board to waive a zoning standard.
No, but, but no, but Rick's right about that. Um, I would suggest we, to Rick's point, I, I would suggest we carry a provision very parallel to the language we use in the 40 yard district, whereby the board can, if it so chooses and finds appropriate, grant a waiver from that, um, provision, rather than forcing, uh, the, effectively the ZBA to have to have a variance hearing on it. It can, the board, planning board, it can itself decide whether or not that's appropriate to, to waive that provision.
Yeah. Yeah. And I would do it for all, all stand, if we're gonna, if we're going to do it for a, a specific one, we might as well do it for everything to give the planning board the ability to waive it and spin, and, and put some language that kind of makes that pretty narrow. It says that it's, you know, points out that it's fairly narrow situations. Because I think that the, you know, when we did to the point, your point about that particular project, Bonnie, when we did our, our, um, strategic land use plan, we had the buildings right up against the street as the parking behind. And the, by actually pushing the building back, we're just perpetuating this auto oriented stuff. And, um, it would have been nice if we had stronger language.
So that would be added in the review procedure section back in D.
I think it would be at the beginning of the development and performance standard section.
Oh, you want it right there. Oh, yeah. Cause that's most relevant.
Yeah. So we're adding it, we would be adding language that distinguishes between standards and guidelines. And then also adding language that says in, in specific circumstances, where it's demonstrated where the board finds that, you know, public purpose would be served or whatever, the board may waive. The board may waive individual standards set forth in this section, something like that.
So just a question, I guess. So this this wouldn't apply to a driveway if a driveway is coming in through the front setback. You're not saying can't park in your driveway. You're talking about parking area.
Right. This doesn't apply to single family homes, for examples. And yeah, so only applies to larger things. So this is really for commercial and multi family developments.
Right, right.
So before the just the driveway we come in.
Yeah, because it really wouldn't work. You know, if you've got multi even multi residential back to our discussion of three or more, four or more, you wouldn't want to park in there with people, other people passing by you. Yeah, I think that'll hold.
Does I don't want to monopolize if anybody else says they like to say.
Well, if you bring it up, then it'll it could stimulate other people to respond. So that
At the very end of B, site plan and architectural design section. There is a provision that says the planning board may request dimensional and setback requirements. That that language is is on and I'm not really sure what to do with it or.
I would say it's a bit unenforceable or usable as written as currently written anyway. You know, it says the the board may request, first of all, it doesn't say the board may require. It also suggests that the board may effectively, you know, one might argue that without some due process require a further setback than the zoning, you know, the relying zoning calls for. So I think it mechanically already has some issues in it as a provision.
What would happen if we said may require? You don't want to
I don't think you can do that. That's because that's overriding the setbacks in the
Yeah.
In the zone words. I think that I think if in a case where there's a special permit attached to this, the planning board has the, you know, the clear ability to do that. You can under a special permit, you can certainly increase the setbacks. But for something that's an as of right use and it's just site plan review.
And this is not relevant. It shouldn't be in there, right?
I think you should delete this.
Yeah, the only piece I would keep of this and whether or not you keep it here in another section, we can scroll through the list, but it is something that says, you know, the plane would may require additional landscaping or screening, some of that effect, just to yeah.
But that would be under landscaping. That wouldn't be here.
Agreed. Yeah, as long as you retain that somewhere. Yeah.
Yeah. I think I missed something. There's a seven, five about historical commission. Oh, gosh, is there something that's just a seven and a small V for five? Because it's kind of important. It's
Is that the one I have highlighted here or?
Right. That's it.
Yeah, right. That's wrong. It's it should be from the local historic district commission. Not the historical commission.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All proposed structures within a local historic district shall require a certificate of appropriateness from the local historic district commission.
Agreed. Got it.
That's why I sit on that commission. So I can tell you these things 10 years later.
And just with regard to subsection six, I I'm not clear why we would take away just the ability to have a discussion with them about whether they might be able to add additional setbacks. I mean, maybe we can't require them, but I don't know why we would take out the language that allows us to at least, you know, go back and forth and say, could you do this? And I mean, we might be able to do that anyways, even without the language, but I don't know.
So I agree with you. I think that my problem was the use of the word requirements and then the whole provision, if they do not alter the allowed use to manage the permitted test use. I think you could you could say planning board may request you know, different dimensional and setback dimensions in addition to those other than those required by the ordinance, just you're right, in order to address the intended purposes of cycle interview and just end it there. Rather than rather than having up because the rest of it, use the word requirements and all of the other stuff makes it sound like it's really a requirement.
I was under the impression from what somebody said during that discussion, it may have been Andy, that this would be in conjunction with a special permit or some other or
I was saying that you could do it. You wouldn't need this if you had a special permit.
Right, exactly. So I thought it was being covered anyway, but maybe that's the wrong assumption. And with Beth's suggestion and your clarification, we could keep it in here for the random times that it stands that the site plan review is standing on its own and we don't have any other option for discussing setbacks.
It just to simplify the language.
Yeah. Okay, good catch. Thanks, Beth. Sorry.
The lighting section, I think, could be just generally beefed up to be all dark sky friendly.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's just a general, we don't have to look at here. It could be much, much more robust, I think.
Yeah. There are principles on websites about dark skies. Absolutely. Most of our applicants now with the big one, big parking lots are coming in with down facing, low spill, et cetera. But I think we need a statement in here for that. And I agree.
I think there's a lot to do with landscaping. Just generally landscaping and screening. I had a I had a general concern about the introductory phrases to number one and two. Where it says, except for zoning districts where the setback requirements are less than 20 feet and except for zoning districts with no side setback requirements. I think in the first case, I think you want to say kind of related not to the zoning district to go to where the building is and say except when the principal building is less than 20 feet from the street, a landscape buffer strip should be usually provided. And and you know, again, that's that's just kind of trying to get away from this parking in front of the building right against the street. And a continuous landscape buffer strip between business and industrial districts and any residential district should be provided in any case, you know, we don't have to talk about the depth of it can vary, but you certainly want to have residences buffered from industrial uses. So I think again, this this kind of beefing up, we could have that section generally.
Agreed. I didn't know. Yeah, I just had a question in general for everybody. You know, we've talked about these large parking lots and requiring what do you call those islands, landscaped islands after 20 20 spaces? Are we are we doing okay with that? Does that need to be beefed up at all? Should there be trees and not just bushes? I don't know. I just I feel like these big expanses, I I know we got slammed on the Mersin parking lot and they called our bluff, but that was more about on the street and this would have helped us if this were cleaned up.
So I would suggest internal tree landscape into internal trees is an important thing. Because they tend to go around the periphery a lot. The inside all barren. And there is a there are studies that say that for that a tree canopy coverage of 40% is an appropriate standard to try to reduce the heat island effect. And so that that could be a starting point, say that the trees should be designed so that at maturity they'll cover at least 40% of the area of the parking lot. And you know, that we may find that that's too much, but that's, I think, been scientifically proven to be a good, a good number.
I hardly agree with that. Relative to the expansive parking lots we've seen or approved over the years. Yeah.
Yeah, because these little bushes are doing nothing when I, you know, even Green Street, you know, it's pretty, but it's not really doing anything to reduce reduce the the heat. All right, add that into the list of things you need to look at, Andy. I think we're giving you more work, but at least it's focused.
No, thank you. It's it's very helpful. Thanks.
And I would I would also suggest that we look at encouraging those islands to be designed to capture rainwater, strong water, rather than to be totally curved. Because you know, the traditional way to do it is to put a six inch curve around the landscape island. So you have to water the plants and you have to then channel all the strong water into storm drains. But if you made them more into rain gardens like the one at the senior center, there's a really nice one, that senior center, the the Brezina School. There's a really nice rain garden there between two areas of of paving. And that's a way to, you know, to be environmentally sensitive rather than to be, you know, highly engineered. So that's thinking about not just this, this, the the size and contents of the of the landscape islands, but also how they work for strong water would be helpful.
Yep, got that agreed. I rain gardens and essentially the law impacted all the techniques is sort of a preference for strong water management to the maximum extent feasible, really.
Yeah.
More on landscaping, Rick?
No.
Okay. What comes after that?
Environmental performance standards. And that's that might be where we talk about sustainable sustainability and resilience, is that?
Oh, actually, stormwater runoff.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to add a number four that would say something to the effect of adherence to industry standard low impact development practices and list a whole bunch of them, some of which we've already talked about. But as appropriate, and I'm going to stick pervious paving in there some year. Somebody's going to agree that these pervious pavers are safe to to snowplow over, but rain gardens, rooftop rainwater catchment systems, other decentralized micro scale controls that info exactly what you said infiltrates door evaporate and or detain rain off close to the source.
So maybe it belongs here rather than where I have it in parking.
Yeah, put it in here. And I sent that to Andy. So he's got the wording on that. But that highlights all of those new techniques in a separate number four.
And actually, that kind of merges into F because it talks about maximizing groundwater recharge.
Yeah. Andy, you want to scroll to the next section after erosion control? See what else is there? Here we are, the environmental performance standards. Did you have something on this, Rick?
No, I think I think it actually does belong back up where you were talking about it before under stormwater.
So where are we going from here? Anything on these exciting things like utilities?
I would offer one point with utilities. I don't know if it's so much a criteria for the plane board review as it is even something we're working on with the water department right now for advanced planning, but we need to make sure that whatever is allowed under the zoning is something that we can provide water for. And we can treat water for right wastewater. So we're having some conversations about the city's water supply and wastewater treatment and making sure that we have an idea of what the remaining capacity is, right? So I think to some extent it's a criteria for consideration, but I think it really belongs more to what we allow as build out under the ordinance essentially even earlier than than someone getting to this point where they're before the board and saying we have a project for review, but I know that because it has to do with utilities.
So you're saying it doesn't fit into site plan review or it fits in somewhere else in site plan review?
I don't know that it needs to be here. It certainly would not hurt at all to have a criteria that speaks to the this, the city's ability to provide water and sewer and so forth. But frankly, I think that it's it's better really that these issues be addressed even earlier than this by making sure that the ordinances effectively do not allow enough build out in one area of the city or another or collectively that might exceed what what the water department can provide in future decades.
Well, it certainly wouldn't be here because this is development and performance standards. If if you wanted a mention of it so that we can ask the question, it could go into section G, site plan review criteria. If you want to put a placeholder in there.
Sure. Yeah, I'll make a note of that one.
To speak to DPS or whomever is managing that 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 capacity issue.
Yep. We could even actually frankly, put it up in F as a submission or start out F, but he have them provide confirmation that there's there's no question that capacity is there from from the water and sewer divisions. But and yeah, but I agree. Let me take a look at that one and see where where maybe better belongs.
Andy, in that regard, this is kind of a related question. Do we require that an applicant contact the other private utility companies to confirm that the utilities as shown in their plan can be served by by the private utility. And I guess some examples I've had are electric transformers on site where a site plan, this is not here, other places where a site plan was approved and then the electric company said, we can't service that transformer there. You need to you need to put it somewhere else. Do we require that to happen before they submit a site plan?
Yeah, it's a valid point and question. We have not, I haven't seen an issue that rings a bell anyway here in Newburyport that's happened like that. Although I'd certainly seen a few instances like that in my career. But I, for the most part, we haven't seen that conflict here. But we also don't really reach out to the North City National National Grid and and say, you know, have you looked at this plan, the access points, the bollards around equipment, you know, is that something that's workable? We obviously hope the applicant has closed loop on their on that one. But and as you know, if if they have a problem, they might need to come back for plan review or modification, but we don't typically reach out to them other than the city's own utility divisions.
I'd like to follow up on that if I may. And you know, furthering that, I think it would be helpful if there was some verbiage in there that that the planning board has the right to require relocation, shielding, et cetera. And probably the best example I could think of, folks, is our water pollution control facility. In my opinion, we spent hours and hours and trying to make the brick building nice and granite and all those things. And then you continue to walk down and you see the great big transformer there. You see the great big diesel generator there, et cetera. And I realized they needed to be there, but there was, you know, zero consideration for any type of fencing, shrubbery, et cetera. And so to the extent that you all agree with me, we should have some type of teeth in our in this area to require not only the review, but eventually the implementation of some form of shielding of these utilities.
I agree. And it can be under utilities here.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anything specific to these two districts that are then talked about under utilities?
I think they're under under utilities or
Oh, they are they separate?
Yeah, so there, yeah, there are further subsections where the ordinance has additional provisions for two waterfront districts, right?
I think I think the word marine is excess there. It's just they're both waterfront districts, but they're not marine districts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I honestly didn't look at this very closely. I don't know if anybody else did.
You know, quite frankly, I think, given that this involves some architectural consideration. I, you know, we haven't really talked so far in this meeting anyway about how far you want to go with adjusting or having more criteria for architecture. And obviously, I'm, I'm thinking of commercial or industrial areas more so rather than say resident, you know, residential. But that's another whole LHC type discussion. But, but even for, you know, the downtown or Story Avenue area to have even more particular standards for architectural design and compatibility. You may want to continue this dialogue on this particular provision or area. Given that it might involve more thought and and a wider discussion.
Well, back to the zoning rewrite committee or whatever we called it. We were told then that this was such a specialized area that the city would hire a consultant to work with us on these. And I I go with that. I mean, Lee and I threw around some ideas and on architectural design and getting more detailed. And we got stymied right from the beginning. What's the purpose? You know, what are we trying to accomplish? Where do we want to do it? How do we want to do it? It is a huge can of worms. And on top of all of that is the political support to get any of it passed, whether it's in the zoning code or standalone or what have you. And putting into site plan review any more detail than we already have is probably not a wise idea. So all that to say, it's a conversation for another day. And my, my book, I don't know if others have other opinions on that. If you've given it some thought, please put your ideas out there because we need to move on this at some point, and it may come sooner rather than later.
And and keep in mind as well, I mean, even if you weren't to touch this portion and we were to bring another package forward for updates. You know, we could obviously leave intact the provisions that that we're not touching, right? So we wouldn't lose those anyway, that those provisions that might be in there today.
So just a question, the, the WMU district is essentially, isn't that essentially the same as the waterfront west district?
No, actually, you know, I pull up the zoning map because I knew I figured this type of question. So let me just pull up here. So I zoom in on sort of the downtown area right here. So the the hatched area is the downtown overlay district. Waterfront West is is blue with the hatch in it.
Yeah.
And then you have the waterfront, we're independent. The green is the agricultural conservation zoning district. We happen to have designated some park areas like Cashman Park and the central waterfront is Icon. But but this is the waterfront marine dependent area in the green.
No, I'm talking about the waterfront mixed use, which is the blue area. And I see it's actually, it's actually waterfront west and also to the east of the.
Into the east. Yeah, sorry. Right. For the waterfront mixed use. Yes. Yeah, it's those two sides of the central waterfront. And and obviously, because we didn't touch the commercial buildings, you see those bump outs around the former Anterayland.
Yeah. So I guess I just had some questions about the building height provisions there. They seem really confusing, but it's probably just a matter of you know, not making any recommendations at this point, just making a recommendation to look at them and try to clean them up. Because it's, they seem contradictory and they also seem like there are some, some issues there that I would disagree with. It sounds like we're recommending that people put skylights in. And I'm not really sure that's what it really, what we really meant to say.
Yeah, again, if there's any architectural design standards, it makes sense to change here. And I'm happy to take a look, further look at this particular one as well. I I would, I I agree completely that we should include to the extent you can, you can come to consensus on updates to these standards if they're inappropriate for that district. That we include that even, even if we're talking about this particular bullet as opposed to the ones above. If you think that something should be adjusted because it's not necessarily something we want to encourage, then I would concur. We should change the phrasing while we're tinkering with that section.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's too detailed for tonight, but I think it's up to wish to look at.
Okay, and does that bring us to the end of site plan review? It seems like there's some more there.
There's more.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long section. So we've got some other things like the building design. Public Street, you know, Vista's ground floor uses. Yeah, I know this, this is, this is a little bit like the 40 hour district waiver, but with something like that to waive some standards rather than variances. We did, we tweaked that language. And then you have the waterfront overlay district, right? So that's again, another waterfront district, which we're, unless we're getting into another whole waterfront west discussion, we might not be taking with that section right now. But, but, but it's there. So it has some, it's just like the waterfront or independent and or mixed use, I should say.
Well, that that will get adapted, I assume, once we, if we do, look at rewriting the overlay district.
Agreed. Right, right. We would.
Spending any time on that now.
Right. And then the rest of this section is is more of the administrative parts of it. So unless you wanted to weigh in on, you might have some thoughts on. Don might actually have some thoughts on this. I know from prior discussions on projects, but performance guarantee provisions. If you wanted to maybe update, you know, anything in the section here, but the rest of it is more kind of bullet plate stuff. There's a couple of mandatory conditions type stuff that says, you know, prior to the construction inspection fees, you know, we're going to tweak some of these to make sure they're up to date, but I don't know that there's a whole lot to spend on of those. I think the plane where typically addresses the type of mitigation issues that that might need to be addressed more than any other board does.
Any last thoughts on site plan review from anybody? Okay, good, good. Good discussion. And I think we're done on that. I'm going to make an executive decision not to talk about parking only because there was a little confusion in Andy's directions earlier on. Then when he gave us direction to look at site plan review, he then sent out a second message that said we wouldn't be looking at parking right now because it's so linked into so many other pieces and it just expanded the amount of work that the staff would have to do and they're not ready to do that. And then he incorporated it into the staff report for preparation for tonight. So I'm going to stick with his first piece of advice, which is not to deal with parking right now. All of that being said, if you have something that you really want to stick into his notes for future consideration on any of the parking ordinance, this is your time to speak up. All right, then we will save that for another night or day. All right, that is the, on our agenda for tonight, that's the end of our public meeting topics. What we're going to do now is take a motion to move into executive session where we will review the minutes and approve them from the executive session that we held whenever it was back in May. And at the end of that, we will close our meeting for tonight. So this is just to formalize our procedure, saying that we will be not returning to public meeting after our executive session. So with that, I'll take a motion to, what does it say?
Bonnie, I'll move to go move to go into executive session.
Thank you, Don. And could I have a second on that?
I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, if we could just for the record, no, and I think that's for the purposes pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 38, section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of the institution for savings in Newburyport and its vicinity versus city of Newburyport Planning Board, 93 State Street, as the open meeting may have a detriment to the effect of the litigating position of the public body.
If I may amend my motion to so move, Andy, that, thank you.
And and I would, I would recommend that we add further into the motion that, just to make it formal, that following the executive session, we will adjourn without returning to public session.
Don, you want to incorporate that into your motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll do that if that's okay with everyone. And I don't know about the first and second.
And who's going to second it?
I'll second Alden.
Okay, I will take roll call to go into executive session. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. We are now, oh, we now have to log out of here and follow the link in our staff report to go into executive session. We'll see you there.
Hey, thank you.